This board of selectmen special meeting Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty four. I get the agenda for six P M. Meeting in person and virtual. And I'd like to call this meeting to order, but first I would like to. There's any. Buddy who's gonna have any public comment, I'd like to keep your speeches down to two or three minutes. So number two on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Sure, I speak sitting there.
Yeah, sure.
Very good.
So.
I'm Father Chris Rose, it don't look like it very much. From Saint George's Episcopal Church here in Bolton. I've been there for over twelve years and. This year has been kind of unique, and that's why I'm here tonight. It's about Route forty four. And there have been a number of accidents. This year, particularly this summer on Route forty four, there's a lot of speeding. At very unreasonable levels. And serious accidents getting more serious as time goes on. The first accident we noticed was our church, somebody was coming out of the. And Venus or Sam's, I think it is across from our church. And somebody was barreling down a forty four headed east. And they clipped him really, really good. And then missed the phone pole in front of our building and went up and knocked down our sign. Which insurance, of course, won't cover, there's a five thousand dollars. But and then they proceeded up the lawn, no braking, no nothing, then went through our parking lot and took off. A little bit later than Methodist Church, is there anybody here from the Methodist Church tonight? Somebody went off the road there and hit the pillar. On the front of the church, not a member of the congregation, one of the the pillars that's sitting there leaning against the building split. So, okay, then about two weeks ago, one of my parishioners was headed to the Dollar General. She had a brand new car, younger woman. And she was stopped at the light near the Methodist Church. And a van came up behind her. And it's so much damage to her car, he was trying to pass up, pass her out in a red light. And her car was nearly totaled, fortunately, she wasn't hurt. But it was a major accident. And then just this week. On the Bolton Coventry Town Line, there were at least four cars involved in a serious accident. One had a phone pole, this is all the same accident, one had a phone pole, another car hit them. Other car landed on somebody's lawn and a huge S U V like. A top or something was across the street with its engine all knocked out. I'm not sure about this, but I understand that somebody was trying to pass the wrong way and caused all that havoc. I'm here to say. We really need. More enforcement on Route forty four. I just Bolton, but Coventry too, but maybe we can start before somebody gets really seriously injured. In the twelve plus years I've been here, I've never seen anything like this on forty four. Yes, there've been accidents, but just a real spate of them, I don't know what the difference is, but there's virtually no enforcement. I know that the deal with the resident state trooper here. It's not enough to cover us. But maybe we need more lights on forty four to slow people down. Maybe we need the state police to do some serious enforcement on forty four to slow people down. There are other steps that could be taken like putting up one of those computerized. Speed traps over the road, takes your picture along with the speed of the car. And then you get a ticket if you're more than a ten miles an hour. Over the speed limit, which I think is forty for most of. Bolton on forty four, something really needs to be done before it gets worse than this. Yes, we've had accidents, but we're having a lot more of them and they're getting more and more serious. And that's my say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes.
I'm a parishioner in Saint George's, record it into mobile food share. That we every every food that's back there Tuesday was dinner. Food share, well, getting an hour and a half, an hour up to ninety two clients. And the problem is traffic getting on or forty four because of the speed of the cars coming down now. We had a problem several years ago where you have to back traffic after forty four. But we haven't had that in years, we don't back traffic so far that we have D and P forty four. The cars getting in and out of the parking lot, if they throw down in front of the gap station. From either direction, you can offer here this wheeling a break to the cars behind them. Or when they have to fall out, get back their head for home. And so that's become a real issue on Tuesday morning. If the amount of traffic speeding by, it made it very hard for cars to get in and out of the parking lot. And sometimes I cringe, you know, and I'm trying to help. But it's a food share, so that's an issue.
And this is out of the church parking lot?
Okay. Bob, will you spell, Bob, will you spell your last name for the minutes, please?
Yes, B A G I O A.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm gonna just echo it, I'm also from Saint George's and.
Betty.
Betty, say your name about what's going on with the the traffic situation, Betty Cruz, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll. See what we can do about putting this on an agenda in the future. The common practice is we don't. React to the public comments otherwise because it's a board of selectmen meeting.
Right, I understand, but I wanted to add on your agenda.
Yeah.
As an important issue coming up, like I say, before somebody is killed or seriously injured. And there are lots of solutions to this that that can be done for not a lot of money. That would would probably really, really help.
It is a state road.
I know, so. All the state police are supposed to enforce the laws there, so there's something that. You folks could do is talk to them about enforcing it better, they they call three eighty four now the racetrack on. On Saturday night and there was a person arrested going one hundred and forty five miles an hour in a Mercedes sports car. Just within the last two weeks. Also, that's that gets off on our lips, so. But yes, it's a state road, but. You know, we're all residents or work in this area and we don't want to see anybody seriously injured.
I agree. Thank you very much for coming and presenting us with that problem and. We'll see if I can.
I mean, I just, it's good to hear.
Yes, folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna take my.
Oh, good for you.
That's exciting.
Thank you.
Thanks for talking.
Thanks.
Okay, number three, appointments and resignations.
Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the. Submission of Kathy Walters' request to become an alternate for the reference commission, she has served us very well. As maybe I'm. Mission as its first and only chairwoman at this time, she wishes to step to an alternate position. I'll second her.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's six, yes, one absent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a. Motion that we accept with deep regret. And deep gratitude for all of her work, the resignation of Linda McDonald as the board clerk for two different boards.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to say that I think Linda's minutes have been exemplary, I've I've served on many boards for the last twenty five, thirty years and. Even her her minutes really rise, rise to the top in terms of clerks, so I don't know if you're listening, Linda.
She's not with us.
Bummer.
We'll share, we'll share your thoughts, yes.
Yeah, I we concur.
Yeah, I concur as well. I think they're awesome and she did a great job. All in favor? Aye, aye, that's six, yes, one absent. I'm doing business instead of an act on a recommendation from the tax committee. So if we can have the chairman from the tax committee bring us up to speed.
So I will do my usual and give a summary and I will let Bob and Amanda do color comp. And color commentary and I will actually let Amanda read our recommendation motion that we made since it's quite detailed. But the gist of it is, we met last week and we've also been working in between before that with Kara and Lori. And what we did, and we also have engaged Charlie Dana, who was a former assessor for the town to serve as another set of eyes who understands, you know, how. How the various systems work. And what we have done is verify the data that, you know, Kara has presented. And we're at the point where. The grand list is going to change every time you go and take a look at it because there's normal adjustments that get made in the everyday course of business and it will go up and down by a few thousand dollars or so every time you look at it. And so we figured that it's, you know, we were at a good point to freeze it and what we also did was take a look at. The original letters that went out to taxpayers, compared those of the data. Jill did some, Amanda did some, I did some, Bob, I don't recall if you had a chance to look at any. Very few, but we looked at it, it was probably several hundred among us, when each of us doing more, you know, some more, some less. And we also used those to compare to what's posted in the G I S system. Online and any discrepancies that we noted Kara and or Lori were able to explain through, this is just the course of normal adjustments that have been made. And some of, you know, and depending on which system you're looking at, the adjustments, you know, typically were made in Q D S. And so if you go online, you'll see some things that are a little bit different in G I S because that comes from vision. So any discrepancies that we had in the records we looked at, you know, Kara was able to explain and or Lori. So I will let Amanda, we I'll let her read the motion, but we basically confirmed that as of that last meeting, there was one million fifty nine. Thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars and ninety eight cents in excess funds to. Return to the taxpayers and Lori also ran the numbers that give us a general idea of how that would be returned to tax, each taxpayer proportional to the amount of. Real property and personal property that they own. So I will let Amanda, you know, read the motion, it was quite detailed and I know I didn't write it down as she was speaking.
So the motion that we approved at our last meeting was, I make a motion that we recommend that the board of selectmen return an amount not to exceed one million fifty nine thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars. To taxpayers each in a in an amount proportional to the taxes that they paid on real estate and personal property taxes. This credit is to be calculated by the difference between the actual mill rate of thirty two point seven four and the reference mill rate of thirty point eight four. Which was calculated off of a corrected net personal and property grand list excluding motor vehicles of five hundred fifty eight million five hundred twenty two thousand two hundred and thirty six. I make my motion contingent on receiving the estimated credit spreadsheet from Lori that aligns closely with this return guide.
Second?
Well, that wasn't a motion to be seconded.
No, that was a motion.
Be made at our last.
And that we approve.
I apologize.
That's the motion that we had approved.
Yeah, it was just the motion that the three of us approved.
Right, but you've got to adopt the same motion.
You can adopt the same motion.
Well.
You want to continue? Since then.
I read, but it's the last.
I read it soon by some monkey, but that was all.
I'll send your motion.
Um, so, Karen.
There's seconds.
So the last part of the motion was contingent upon getting that estimated credit spreadsheet from Lori, so we did. Yesterday, get those two credit spreadsheets from Lori, so what she did is she gave. Q D S that reference mill rate of thirty point eight four and they calculated what the credit would be for each person's personal property and real estate. The credit for personal property came out to thirty three thousand four hundred and seventy nine, the real estate credit came out to one million twenty eight thousand and six cents. The total then that would be credited was one million sixty one thousand four seventy nine, which is.
Two thousand seventeen dollars.
Thank you, two thousand and seventeen dollars. Over the extra money that we are, we received as a result of the the. The tax issue, you know, I I I don't know that we can get any closer than that, you know, we could go back to her with a different reference mill rate, but. Given the different number of tax bills, we're talking pennies and cents on the dollar for each of these credits and so. It would be my recommendation that we essentially adopt. A motion that I made, but change out the number of one million fifty nine thousand four sixty two with the one million sixty one thousand four seventy nine.
And I'm fine with that, it's, I mean, it's six and one half a dozen of another because if we, like I said, if we run the grand list again in another week or so, it's going to be up or down from where it was.
And it's miniscule and we owe it to the public to resolve this issue as quickly as possible, so that's why we felt. We'd set a number tonight, recommend a set number tonight for the board to act on.
Yeah.
And I will say that the grand list that we have, you know, the corrected grand list that we saw. Um, was as of, I think it's seven thirty one.
Yes.
That she gave us, so it was after the board of us, it was the grand list after the Board of Assessment Appeals and Real Estate Adjustments, but prior to any. Corrections since then, right, because we know it's an ongoing effort that they undergo.
So does somebody want to convert? You want that, convert that to a motion?
I think Amanda's.
I make a motion that we recommend that the board of selectmen return an amount not to exceed one million sixty one thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars to taxpayers. Each in an amount proportional to the taxes that they paid on real estate and personal property taxes, the credit is to be calculated by the difference between the actual mill rate of thirty two point seven four. And the reference mill rate of thirty point eight four, which was calculated off of a corrected net personal and property grand list excluding motor vehicles. Of five hundred fifty eight million five hundred twenty two thousand two hundred and thirty six dollars.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
The way it's worded. Is it clear that it would be a credit? And how it would be returned?
This does not go into the operationalization of the return, this is just the dollar.
I'm expecting you, am I expecting that there will be a second motion?
You're going to have a second motion, we just wanted to break this up into chunks, one was the amount. Two was then, how are we going to do it to get the agreement on that? And then third is, we're gonna have another meeting to work out the mechanisms for doing this and bring that back for, you know, approval of this, you know, board.
I'm satisfied, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sir, any other guests?
Couple, couple of questions, so the actual mill rate, that's, that means the mill rate on which the tax. Um, the tax bills were were sent, were created last year, that's what you're calling the actual mill rate?
Actual mill rate, yes, voted on by the finance committee and that tax bills were based on.
And then the reference mill rate is the mill rate that you have determined should have been used to create the tax bills?
Would have been used. Would have been used theoretically with the.
You have to correct them up.
Okay, and.
And both Jill and I got the same reference mill rate.
Yeah.
Okay, and on a few meetings ago, you and Ross had talked about how you were, you both took spreadsheets from. The tax collector and maybe the assessor, I'm not sure, but you two were five hundred thousand dollars off, so how did you two solve that discrepancy?
We got a new spreadsheet that Lori and Kara worked on together. That came together and made sense and they're totaled up and so after looking at that and reviewing it and doing the. The checks that Ross mentioned, we were, we felt that it was correct.
Okay, great.
And again, Charlie Dana looked at it too, and with his experiences and assessor felt that. Kara and Lori were doing the right approach with their corrections and that this was, you know, a good number, as good as it was going to, you know, be able to get.
And they spent a lot of time and extraordinary amount of time and a lot of detail, we give them a lot of credit for their work.
They all cross checked, they they checked their own work and then Jill checked over, I think around two hundred and fifty entries, I checked around forty, Ross checked around twenty five, yeah, so.
And then also they said they were entered and double checked the results too, so it's not, it's like there were multiple eyes going over this.
Right, the issue with the original spreadsheets that Ross and I were looking at was that they were from different time periods. Um, snapshots. Put in a line with each other, but so Lori and Kara really needed to work together to come up with the joint. One that they then, which I have a copy of here if anybody wants to see it.
Great.
Is that it, Quinn?
Yes.
I'd like to thank you guys for going through all this and I only ask that you send that motion to Kathy.
Because I certainly didn't write it down.
Write it down. All right, I get all in favor of approving the motion as read by Amanda, that's six yes. And one app, six yes and one absent. Motion carries forward.
Did you want to discuss the the second motion panel that you had brought up, do you want to?
Yes, I think we should do that.
I think I should do it because then that will inform our next meeting and how we go about getting the mechanism put in place.
Do you want me to make a motion? Amanda, do you want to make a motion?
I can try, go ahead. I'll make a motion that the. One million sixty one thousand four seventy nine. Get credited to or get returned to taxpayers either as a credit on next year's taxes. As defaulted or as a check written out to them should they choose that option. Um, and that every taxpayer had personal or real estate taxes that they paid will get a letter. In the mail stating the amount that they are owed and their options. Excluding any bills less than five dollars.
Correct. Or if it was not paying.
We didn't talk about that.
I think that that gets into.
It's too witty.
Um, no, it's a good question though, because we did talk about that and the intent was if people were. Not up on their payments that this would be, you're not going to send them a check.
No.
This, if anything, would be credited against their arrears, they would not have that option. So this is some of the details we need to go into and. The mechanism of actually implementing this, including coming up with a letter, getting that review by, you know, you folks as well as our attorney and so forth.
Should definitely look to staff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I I would recommend that you let the tax committee go back and discuss this with staff.
Right.
And let them come back to the board with a recommendation as to how to go about it, because like, staff is going to have a lot. Of, of, you know, mechanisms and I think some valuable input into the process.
And that's why you can have, we can have the whole package.
Yeah.
Instead of coming back, we could.
And the intent would be the default mechanism is a credit on your taxes for next year unless you specifically request getting reimbursed now.
Right.
You know, that's the understanding, so I want to. How do you do that, and then that gets into the fine print about people who are in arrears on their payments and.
I think there is.
All that other stuff.
So Jim, are you saying not to vote a motion at all?
I I, if if it were me sitting on the board, I would ask the tax committee to reconvene with staff. And come back with a recommendation as to the mechanism of how to get this done.
I, I'll rescind my motion. I'll rescind my second, but I would say that I'd like to have a board poll, the board board poll. As to the consensus to the intent of that motion. So that they have, so the tax committee has direction.
I I would agree with the intent to have a consensus vote, yes.
I'll start and say that I support the intent of the.
Replant. Right.
Well, likewise, I mean, that's, that's what we discussed and I, that's the worst suggestion.
Are we all in favor of the intent of the emotion, the emotion?
Good, so.
All right, okay.
So I will set up a follow up meeting as quickly as possible next week, working around the fact that I've got to go to a conference for registrars, so. Work it out, get it done as quickly as possible.
I think Lori's gonna have a ton of input.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
The one that has the. And finally, it's the prime as well, right?
Yeah, and finance too, because everybody's gonna be working on it.
Yeah.
All right, next, okay, are we good to that for now?
Yes.
Thank you, Ross, thank you, Ross. Consider an act on public parking for Nathan Hale Greenway, Stony Road. Uh, I believe there was a couple of course, I need to reread course.
Yeah, I, we got, we got. We only have two responses from all of the letters that we sent out and we did send those out. Not certified, what was it, remember, um, receipt requested? With proof of mail.
With proof of mail.
That's the right term.
Right.
And we got, we got two, two comments back, one from Damian Beck. Of one forty nine South Road and he talks about, I'm not going to read it verbatim, but he talks about. The fact that we're not planning on using grant funding, which means that taxpayer money will be used, shouldn't the community? Be involved in the decision making process regarding this. The expenditure, then it goes into a second issue, which is regarding the current state of soccer fields. Which are often wet and muddy, leading to game, practice and game and practice cancellations. And could we provide an update on the plans for improving or constructing existing fields? Um, and then we did get a second communication from Rob Goring of one twenty six South Road. And, you know, he again goes on, paraphrasing, but says he does not see a reason to spend our money on a trail to nowhere. How much will it cost? As far as he's concerned, Coventry and Andover are not on board. So why isn't the existing long parallel trail enough? So those are the only two comments we've gotten back. And we sent out in excess of twenty letters, as I recall.
So the current status on the parking area is. A J or went with, did you go look at it?
I have an appointment with him for this coming Monday to meet him out there, but he did look at it with John.
Okay, so it's, and.
I can, I can give you a quick synopsis of that, so the 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 two gentlemen that out there and. They're gonna follow up, at least A J will follow up with meeting when they're. Uh, A J's opinion was that the location is decent, that there is. An existing driveway and parking area that are not in horrible condition. Uh, he feels that he can. You know, do this as a fill in, probably, you know, late fall, early winter project to get it done, you know. At odd moments when they have a little bit of downtime. And that, um, you know, it might require a little bit of effort around the edges where the existing parking area is deteriorated. But he didn't think it was going to be a heavy lift to get this accomplished. We also talked about doing a little bit of clearing within the towns right away to help with the sightline from, you know, the the traffic coming down the hill and around the corner.
So the only money that would possibly be needed would be.
A little bit of material, you know, probably some processed gravel or something along that line, but.
And maybe road crossing.
We're probably gonna, eventually we'll probably have to put a crosswalk in, um, you know, which is, you know, painted lines on the road, probably have to eventually do some signage. Um, but I think we start by establishing the parking area, be clearing the sightlines and then we're actually better able to make judgments on what's actually needed. Uh, you know, a crosswalk's certainly going to be needed at some point, but.
Is there a motion? That we want to bring forward this?
I'd like to move, well, I don't do, would you like one?
I think we need one, yeah. Well, we're, we're, right now, we're not, we're. We're actually moving forward with the project, right?
No, so I, so I think what, so I think what happened was, you know, we, I think Gwen and her team of. Individuals that helped her out went out and followed the board's direction and exhausted every opportunity for. Um, possible parking areas and this is their recommendation, which has the support of town staff. And I think the board really does need to act on it at this point.
Oh, that this is the spot, that's.
This is the spot, right, I mean.
Okay.
And I think Gwen can go into more details about why this is the spot.
And to authorize the town, uh, town highway department to proceed with the work.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's all, no, I don't need any, any more.
Okay.
I'm, I just wanted to get in my mind's brain, what we're, where are we going with this, okay, that's it, easy.
I'm, I just wanted to get in my mind's break, what we're, where are we going with this thing? Okay, that's it, easy.
So, okay, so I'll make a motion that this board authorize the town. Is it the highway department, Jim? Am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
Or is it?
Yep.
Highway department to proceed with creating, or improving the, um, area on store, Stony Road. That has been identified as the optimal parking area to access the Nathan Hill Florida.
Wait a second. Did you second it?
Okay. I couldn't get in there, okay.
Is there any discussion on this?
It's the best spot we've ever had and I think it's a good spot.
I didn't see your handle either.
My mouth moves faster than my hand. It's, it's something I have to deal with.
Alright, go ahead.
I'm, I'm going to lean on the side of residents that are in opposition. We have a parallel rail right across Route Six. That is greatly improved and, you know, it's certainly room for more usage. And at this time, I think it's, uh, it is a use of taxpayer money and you're taking people offline. Took three years to get one little road fix, uh, on South Road and it's not done yet. Uh, we have many small projects that are left undone. We have projects that need to be computerized on the highway department. There's a lot that needs to be done that has not been done. I'm under a new administration. We've been short-staffed all summer. I agree with Mr. Gary that if this were through a grant process and we're hiring somebody to do it through a trails grant or something like that, perhaps. But this puts it right in the middle, a half-mile away, half-mile away and no interest to going further. But the last point I want to make is safety and I think it's a poor placement because it's a quiet. Not very low-usage road and I can see it being a hangout spot. I can see it being a broke spot. Uh, because it's not well-traveled. And, um, I think that's a, a concern for the town and, and safety, so I will not be supporting.
Any other comments? Uh, should we have a vote? All in favor? Five, five opposed, one and one absent. So it's five yes, one absent and one no. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Slugg, first, I, I will take the time to respond to these, um, two folks that have taken the time to send a letter in. And front of the, embrace you.
I mean, one doesn't, one doesn't even address the merits of the parking. He's just grossed to the trail in general, which is not the issue in. Before.
But I think they deserve a response.
Yeah, definitely. I'd be glad to help, to look at whatever, if you want me to look at.
I would, I would appreciate your assistance.
Uh, five new business, consider an act on the resolution to homeland security grants.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move, we give authorization to apply. Uh, for the resolution of the homeland security grant.
Is there a second?
I'm second it with the comment that presented in the, in our pack, packet.
Is there any discussion? Uh, do you want to run a quick explanation on this?
This is a grant that we have applied for the last few years and, um. We did apply again. It was automatic, but when it came back to us, Pam's name was still on the resolution. So we needed to switch it over to Rodney this year. Um, we just hadn't gotten that far, so that's what this is just changing names and doing a new resolution for.
How much is the grant?
Two, two around five thousand dollars a year, I think, great. I, I think it's around five thousand.
It's been, yeah, it's in that range, been that way for a while.
It started at three thousand, it's going up. I think it's around five thousand.
So any other discussion?
There's a, just a typo correction that I will have talked to Kathy about after.
Hey.
Oh, now you're making trip, but we don't have time. Five, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Hi.
Five, that's six yes, one absent, Tim's still not. Um, I can be, I be, consider an act on regional performance incentive program.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the. Blackman's Office to move forward with the. Submission of the regional performance incentive program, RPIP, in the amount that was listed in the packet. Uh, shared with the town of Marlboro.
Uh, is there a second?
Yes.
My second from Bob. Is there any discussion on this?
I think it's another good example of cooperation between communities to save money, plus is a, a significant financial incentive here. That makes it ex- extremely, uh, cost-effective for, for both parties. And, uh, it allows, as, as you look at it, as you go forward, obviously the, the grant funds drop, but. It's, it allows us to bring our staff where it should be and another community and also. Puts our, our, our building department in a far better shape at a very, very reasonable cost, within our budget. Jim, right? That's within our budget.
It is. Man, uh, Gwen, go ahead.
I have a question. Does, does the, uh, the total cost of services line, does that mean that is the salary for the building official?
Um, it is the salary of the proposed AVO with fringe and. I believe four or five hours a week for supervision by the chief building official.
Okay, so the, alright, so it's, so it is that the assistant building official salary, then a salary and benefits and.
Correct.
What the supervision you mentioned. Okay, so that salary is going up every year. Um, just wondering how. We are going to. Handle paying for the assistant building official in the years where this grant, that the grant does not cover. It's, I mean, the grant, it, I, will it run out? Will it expire in twenty twenty-seven? And then, and then we will have to come up with. A larger share of that to pay for that salary.
Our, our share increases as those Marlboros over the three-year period of the grant.
Yeah.
And then we would have to enter into a new agreement with Marlboro after that if both towns wish to continue. The service, very similar to what we have with, uh, Wellington, Ashford and Andover currently.
So after twenty twenty-seven, there will not be any grant funding.
Correct.
So we'll be possibly paying like seventy thousand or so, uh, if we're going to split it fifty fifty with, with Marlboro.
It's not fifty fifty. Marlboro gets more, more of the hours than we do, but.
Right.
But yes, the, the sa- the salary is calculated at year one at about seventy-two thousand.
Because I'm not familiar with this all, can you explain what they would be doing?
We, we would provide building official services to the town of Marlboro.
Which means building inspections.
Um, planning reviews, permits, inspections, just like we currently do with the towns of, towns of Andover, Wellington and Ashford. We, it's an expansion of our regional building department. But we have an opportunity here, uh, for both communities to benefit under this regional performance incentive program. To take advantage of grant funding to offset the cost for both communities for the first three years. And one of the things that we find, aside from the fact that it's very difficult to hire positions like. Building officials and assessors and things like that, is that it's much harder to hire part-time people. And this allows us to hire a full-time person, uh, that is shared, is shared cost between the two communities.
You can come in and sit. We'll be done shortly.
And just, just so we're clear, Rob is actually the grant applicant and they're going to be, they would be the ones administering the grant. So that is a little less burden on us, um, from a perspective of, you know, it's, it's one less thing for our finance department to manage. All we would be doing is, is receiving quarterly payments.
Uh, is there any other comments? Uh, shall we take a vote? All in favor?
I am.
Hi, that's six yes, one absent. Thank you. Uh, now we move on to the, uh, you got the reports and updates, the budget report is in there. Is there any discussion on that? Uh, if there isn't, we'll move on to the, the accounts payable report.
That I would make most my chairman that you touch the AC report is presented.
Uh, is there a second? It's just, it's, it's the AP for twenty-four, twenty-five year. And it total is. One hundred fifty-eight thousand sixty-two dollars and four cents. Uh, is there any comments? On this?
I have a, I have a question, uh. There are certain real estate, um, refunds. And I'm just wondering, such as, for example, uh, page four, a state of Stuart Novick. Uh, page eight is, um, will miss common, so I'm just wondering if those real estate refunds have anything to do with our tax issue? Or not?
I don't think so. I can, I can double-check for you, but I don't believe that.
So why would, why would thirteen thousand dollars be refunded to?
Well, we've, we've had, we've had situations where people have paid their tax bill twice before.
Oh.
Um.
I see, so it's a mistake.
It could be a mistake. Somebody may have, you know, um, overpaid for some reason. They may have gotten an adjustment after they paid their tax. There are a number of reasons that there might be a tax refund.
Okay, but that, so you don't.
But I don't believe it has anything to do with the ongoing taxes issue.
Okay, alright.
And then you have, you, you also see these miracle ones where, um. They were transferred properties.
Yeah, that one, that's a little more.
That happens so often.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I remember last year, we had three or four people actually pay their taxes twice, as strange as that sounds.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Amanda?
Um, so I see the expense for MTS builders for the greenhouse at the school. Are they done with that one?
The windows, the windows will go in this week or next week and it'll be done.
Okay, I was gonna say. Finished when I walked.
There's about fifteen thousand left. The windows came in, they just haven't installed them.
Alright.
I think they're scheduled for Thursday.
Yeah. Yes. Are you looking for more questions?
Hang on.
Thank you.
Is that the final amount to MTS for that?
No, I think we have still around ten thousand more after completion.
Okay, cause that, that was like seventy something.
It was like, I think it was like eighty, eighty-two or eighty-five.
Cause we gave a ten thousand deposit.
Correct.
Plus this.
Yeah. So there's still, there'll be a fund to go.
Are you good, Amanda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Six yes, one absent, motion passes.
Um, number C, the budget can first, there's one, but it's for a national purpose only. I did not see a second one.
That's correct.
Yep, so I don't believe it would be back on it. You could move on to the next one.
Uh, D is the town administrator's report.
Yep, and I'll, we have a few minutes, right? Um, so, uh, just, just, we met with our team, uh, which included myself and John Butrimovic and. AJ and our town engineer, and we talked about the completion of the connectivity trail. Our goal was to file, uh, complete the loose ends by the end of October. Uh, the Lori Road Drainage Project bid will be live tomorrow. And we have a pre-bid meeting on the seventeenth, bid opening on the twenty-fourth. And we'll be looking to, uh, bring you a recommendation that your October meeting for. Well, probably approval of a contract for that. Um, Heritage Farm Trail, um, of the other, let's see, the other things we talked about. For the Brandy Street Drainage Project, uh, the highway foreman has requested a plan with elevations. And I've asked for, for an estimate for that cost. So that we know what we're getting into. The hope is that we can get that done before the snow flies or at least be ready for the spring. The Heritage Farm Trail drawings are at the thirty percent completion mark. They're going to be sent to CROG for review. And then our team will meet again here, uh, to discuss after we get the, the comments from CROG. The community septic is ready to go out to bid, but we are getting the plans over to. State Historic Preservation Office because their review was required. And we are finalizing the plans for the soccer and ball field that Eric parked to go out to bid. Rockwell Road is ready for reclaiming and paving. That's currently scheduled for October eighth. We met with Ty and Bond today. Actually, preliminary results show some PCB paint on metal ceiling. And a significant amount of asbestos. There is some additional testing that's going to be completed to identify the parameters of the soil and caulking contamination. And Ty and Bond will begin, they're putting together the remediation plan while we complete the additional testing. We did also have a meeting with Chelsea Groton Bank. They're not able to offer any better rates currently, but they also see no volatility in the current rate that we have. They are going to provide communication in advance of any changes to the interest rate. And they're actually going to work with us in the finance team to figure out what the fiscal impact of twice a year. Tax collection would be as opposed to once a year tax collection, so that when the board takes that up again, they'll have that. As information for their decision.
You were very helpful.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. It was a really good meeting. Uh, we completed the short-term loan for the fire truck. The registrar voter connection is now installed and working, but it's different, so it requires a little more testing and understanding by the registrars or voters. Uh, we met with Manchester regarding the proposed water line. We've sent a letter expressing our interests in the water line. And I believe that's been received by the town manager's office, but has not yet gone to the, um, to the board. Uh, we underwent an audit for the EMPG process, which is the grant that we just acted on authorizing Rodney's name to be on. And we are collecting bids for cemetery, which will be bringing information to the board at a near future meeting. We met with every source to discuss rate increases and storm prep. We met with our resident troopers to get them started on the rural roads grant traffic enforcement. And Route forty-four is one of our targeted areas, as is West Speed and Hema Road. Those are areas that we have. Consistent problems with speeding and distracted driving. Uh, we wanted to make you guys aware that there's a new recycling video link posted on the website. And it shows a very enthusiastic young man. Um, we had hoped that we could work with him to make some additional videos in the future. But unfortunately, they moved out of town. Uh, but we do have a disclaimer allowing us to, you know, post the video. And he and his mom were both very excited to have, uh, to have his video posted on the town's website. Um, and we received two communications regarding the, uh, parking for the, uh, for, for the, uh, trail. Any questions?
Amanda?
The facilities assessment thing?
We worked on it again today. We're close, we're this close. Thank you for asking.
And where are we on Google's early?
Uh, we're at standstill. We're, uh, we're just gonna do the maintenance on it.
Recommendation with the town attorney is to just do the maintenance.
Don't, doesn't that require us to take some kind of an action about that? I mean, especially it, it got, but it got so much public attention. Uh, everything that.
Well, I think, I think you should at some point make that decision publicly.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, no, I, I, but I don't know that you have to necessarily take any action.
Well, I, I meant that it, it, it should be, it should be stated in public that, that we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
That what, and exactly what the maintenance plan is.
Come on in, Bill. We're almost done.
We're almost wrapped up. Thank you. Thank you for sharing the space tonight.
Any other questions? Uh, okay, so now we'll move on to, uh, the remaining meeting dates for twenty twenty-four. So Kathy put together the main dates because of the payroll and the accounts payable. Putting every month, every other week.
Would you like a motion to accept these dates?
Yes.
If, I would make a motion that we accept the dates as presented in our packet.
You have a second? We got a second.
So.
Marba, December thirty-first.
One on election day? That's a little weird.
We have in the past.
Yeah.
I mean, I coincide, but quite honestly.
We, when it's a, a immediate election, we, we moved in, but when it's a state election, we've had it on election.
Yeah, for some reason I had the twelfth written down as our, being our regular meeting. Did we, are, cuz I, I thought we had already decided on that, no?
You may, you may have.
We had that discussion, but no, it's all about AP lining things up, right?
Is that new, new day, Kathy?
What are we talking about here?
It did say AP included, but that thirty.
You can do two things without changing that. You can have the regular meeting on the nineteenth and just have it AP on the fifth. That means.
I don't think we can make, is it early enough to make the nineteenth a regular? Your chair, sorry. All right, so what are we talking about?
November.
November fifth?
No, November, so do we have a course likely? Well.
We have made it, when we were setting the dates originally, we had moved that. But because of the AP issue.
Right when they. We will have a lot of late payments if we don't have the AP meeting.
We're gonna have, we have these, we have the fifth is our.
You're stripping that page in there.
I know, the fifth is our regular meeting.
Right.
And then the nineteenth becomes AP.
Yeah, right. So there was nothing on the twelfth.
No, there was nothing on the twelfth.
I remember that discussion going.
Uh, so do we wanna accept it the way it is, or do we wanna move it to Wednesday? Or is that a chaos to try to move it? Yeah, I don't, I, I, is it, I think I would.
Is Wednesday, is Wednesday available, Kathy?
I can't make that meeting. I have a standing monthly meeting.
On Wednesday.
On that first Wednesday, yes. We're wide open, so I mean, we can, we need to.
We could Thursday, we could probably.
We make the meeting at six o'clock.
Probably do it Monday.
We'll make a meeting at six o'clock and make it, just have a quick meeting and do the AP on it, and we'll put more items on the nineteen.
Agenda cleared.
Yeah, keep a short agenda.
Uh, if you can keep the agenda short, I would appreciate that, cuz I will have to leave at like ten of seven to get to that meeting. I'm sorry, on the fifth, that's.
We're good with that, okay. Yeah.
So I, I made my motion, uh, to make that.
What's with the thirty-first?
Yeah, what's the thirty-first?
Why, you have something planned?
Well, that is when it fell, and that is an AP week.
Well, it's gonna.
I was told I am not allowed to skip that, so.
Really? It's gonna fall somewhere.
You feel free to tell me another date. I just put what I have.
What, okay, that's a, what is, what is, what day is the thirty?
Tuesday, it's the thirty-first.
Screw that, Monday?
Um, whatever you guys would like. I just was.
Or the week before.
We can't do it. Mon- Monday, Monday is a stretch, but we can do it on Monday.
On Monday.
Monday wouldn't be, Monday would be the thirtieth.
It's a, it's a stretch for finance.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna change that to the thirtieth.
Yeah.
And are you still doing six?
Yes, please.
Thirty.
We can make that.
Yep, no problem. And let's just keep in mind that you will be adding more meetings in between here. In between all of this, cuz you always do. I'm just giving you a heads up.
For your different committees that.
Yes, for your different committees and for budget and all that.
Okay, uh, so.
We have a motion as amended.
As amended.
And seconded by Bob?
Yeah.
As there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passed, those are new dates. Uh, so do we wanna try to squeeze these in? We can get through the July thirtieth special meeting. Handle our council fair, special meeting, uh, July thirty. July thirty. Let's see.
John, I would recommend that we, uh, table the minutes. Eight through D because it's five minutes before seven, so the next board could get themselves established for their seven o'clock thing.
Is there a second? Do we have to make?
Amanda, I'll take.
Amanda's got second.
Your hand came up fast.
Uh, any other discussion? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I, I, six, yes, one absent, motion passed.
Don't reprint the minutes.
Minutes will be discussed.
We got enough of them.
The, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make much of the adjournments.
Uh, all in favor? Hi, hi, that's. Yes, one absent, meeting adjourned.